This is the most significant transportation solution in Hampton Roads region in the last 20 years, and we're real proud to be part of delivering this project in partnership with VDOT. Now, one thing I'll point your attention to is we have branded the project Elizabeth River Tunnels. This was the business unit that VDOT had, and that's the one that we're going to carry forward. And so, we call the project Elizabeth River Tunnels, operated by Elizabeth River Crossings in partnership with VDOT. As Marcus said, I'm Greg Woodsmall, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer with Elizabeth River Crossings OpCo LLC. And with me today have got a couple of folks who are part of our team. We've got Dallas Marlowe, who is our Construction Director, and Leila Rice, who is our Public Affairs Manager. And also joining us today, a couple of our partners with VDOT, have Frank Fabian, who's the Project Manager with VDOT, and Ha Kaler, who's comms person with VDOT as well. Now, Elizabeth River Crossings is the entity, or Elizabeth River Crossings OpCo, because let me clarify that, Elizabeth River Crossings was the organization that was in existence during the development phase. Elizabeth River Crossings OpCo was created to be the entity that delivered this project. And we're the entity that actually signed the contract or the comprehensive agreement with VDOT back on December 5th, 2011. Now, ERC OpCo is a special purpose company with the sole purpose of, for this project, to design, to construct, to operate, and maintain this project. Now, at financial close, which occurred Friday the 13th, April the 13th of this year, prior to that point in time, Elizabeth River Crossings OpCo had no employees. And in fact, our first employee joined the company on April 30th of this year. And I was number two. I don't know how I got slipped to number two, but I was the number two employee. And to date, we currently have 107 employees, and during the peak of the construction period, will be up to approximately 140 employees.
Greg, just for our benefit, I mean, that is for, that's your office of 140 employees?
Right. Yes, the contractor itself has, will generate, we've heard, in excess of 1,000 jobs for this project. Yep. This is the entity, and I'll get into that a little bit, what our sole purpose is. Dallas is going to touch base a little bit on the construction here in a minute. But I did mention that the project entails, of course, we know, the Midtown Tunnel, the new tube, the extension of the Martin Luther King Freeway, and the interchanges on the I-264. Also at the Midtown is the interchanges at Brambleton Avenue and Hampton Boulevard. The project also includes the renovation of the existing tube at the Midtown, and the rehabilitation of the two existing, the westbound and eastbound tubes at the downtown. Now, the one thing this project also includes is the operations and maintenance for this project area for the next 58 years. In addition to that operation and maintenance, you'll see some dotted lines in your map that is the area across the Berkeley Bridge, and the area across the Western Freeway to the First Interchange. We've also accepted the incident management for those areas. So, we'll be, we'll be operating and maintaining the areas within the project, as well as the incident management in those other areas. Now, our organization is currently located right here in Norfolk on Monticello Avenue. That's, it's a temporary office. And once completed, we're going to relocate our headquarters right here on the Penner's Point side, and it should be completed in December. And that's where the majority of our employees will be housed. We also have a facility on State Street in Norfolk, which will, has approximately 25 operations and maintenance personnel that will work out of that facility. And I'm also showing you here is, and I'll talk a bit, a little bit about the tolling aspect, but we've located our customer service center on the Portsmouth side. Now, on July 13th, which happened to be a Friday the 13th as well, we had so much luck with the financial close on a Friday the 13th, we said, let's go for it again. At 10 o'clock on that evening, we took the keys to this facility here. That's when we actually began our operations and maintenance for this facility. In preparation for taking over that responsibility, we recruited and hired 63 of the existing VDOT employees who worked on these facilities previously for VDOT. Others elected to stay with VDOT, others elected to retire, and others elected to go elsewhere. But we were pleased to gain the institutional knowledge of the 63 employees to help us take over this operations and maintenance. Now, the thing that we have that VDOT didn't have for this project is dedicated funding and dedicated resources. It's everything we do, our whole sole purpose again, is dedicated for this project. We've entered into a number of service contracts with DBE and SWAM firms. And in fact, to date, we utilized the services of 12 DBE firms and 52 SWAM firms. I'm also pleased to announce that as a startup company, we did not have any physical resources. So, we had no equipment, we had no vehicles. And the part I'm pleased to announce is that we purchased to date $1.3 million in vehicles from Freedom Ford, right here in Norfolk, and also have another $560,000 worth of vehicles on order from that same vendor. Now, this dedication, what it allows us to do is provide a higher level of service than what VDOT could provide. One of the first things that we did, and one of the first things that's primary, a priority for us, is safety first. And the one thing that we did was we implemented a dedicated safety service patrol. Previously, VDOT had a safety service patrol that was portion of the I-264 corridor right We have a dedicated safety service patrol. We have one patrol dedicated to the Midtown corridor, and we have one dedicated to the Norfolk corridor. And as a result of that, and a new contract that we've put in place with Tidewater Express, our new wrecker service, we've been able to achieve outstanding incident clearance response times. In the downtown corridor, it's been 14.4 minutes, and in the Midtown corridor, it's been 12.3 Now, we also are able to respond to issues a lot quicker for maintenance purposes. Some of you may have heard about a reported flooding in the Midtown Tunnel a couple of weeks ago, and that there were nine to 12 inches of water in the tunnel. Well, that was incorrect. There was about one to two inches of standing water at Mid River. We closed the tunnel for a short period of time for safety purposes with bidirectional traffic. It's an unsafe issue. We were able to open the tunnel back up within 40 minutes. And we believe that's a record time for an incident such as that. One thing that we did detect was a pump sensor that failed, and we've since replaced, repaired that sensor and have a new one on order. So, again, here's a situation where we believe our dedicated resources to the project allow us to deliver a level of service that VDOT was not able to deliver. We've also implemented a 1-855 ERT road number that anyone can pick up the phone and call that 24/7 to report any maintenance issues. We've implemented a lot more frequent litter pickups, and we've also implemented a much more aggressive mow cycle with our landscaping. One of the things that we have done is work with the City of Norfolk's staff here, specifically over on the Midtown Tunnel side. And for those of you that travel that area, you probably know that significantly, aesthetic, significant improvement to the aesthetics in that area. Normally, VDOT would normally mow about three times a year, which is their statewide standard. At a minimum for the project area, we will mow four times and have a fifth one available within the budget. In these locations within the city, we plan to mow every three weeks. And part of that effort in working to improve the service, we've met with the folks right there on Raleigh Avenue, and they're very pleased to the level of service that we've provided in that area. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dallas Marlowe for a few slides.
I'll have to excuse you. I'm used to talking to people with hard hats on and work boots, not ties and suits. But my name is Dallas Marlowe. I've worked in construction my whole career, more years than I care to imagine. But I've been brought here to oversee the construction of the, of the Midtown Tunnel, the retrofits, and the construction of the MLK. Tonight, I'm just going to touch on the things that would interest the City of Norfolk, you know, in the highlights here. But the, upon financial close, a contract came into effect that with a joint venture of Skanska, Kiwet, and Weeks Marine. It's a $1.54 billion contract to construct those structures. And the, and Skanska has an office right here. They're locally based, and their regional office here, their construction office is here. They've just recently opened up their Penner Points office on VPA property, and it's rather a huge office. They're going to bring in over 200 people into the area to work on this project, salaried individuals. Plus, another 600 or so hourly people will work on the project in this area. There'll be another 300 to 400 people working up at Penner's Point to fabricate the tunnel sections. The, just recently, we entered into an agreement with the City of Norfolk to supply the water line, the new water line across the river. It's going to be, currently, it's a 30-inch line. It had to be moved for the tunnel construction. It's going to be upgraded to a 36-inch line. And the, from what I understand, that 36-inch line was very important to the overall growth of the city. The, when you, on this timeline, when you look at what you're going to see out there, the first thing that you'll probably see is the installation of the water line. It takes place starting in October. They'll start building the jacking pits, they'll start assembling the pipe. In November, the jacking contractor will move in. In December, he'll actually start jacking across the river by jacking, it's a jack-and-bore type deal. He'll go across the river, grab the pipe at Portsmouth, and pull it back through the hole that he's jacked into place. And the water line should be installed and ready to be put back in service in April. The new one will be in service in April. I think the actual downtime is only a few days where we actually make the connections. The next thing that you'll see that will get people's interest is the dredging for the tunnel will start taking place in February next year. And by the time the dredging is complete, the, and the rock base put down, then the tunnel sections will start showing up in the November of 2014. And it'll, one, there'll be approximately one tunnel section per month placed across the tunnel. So, the, it'll be almost a solid year before the, all the tunnel sections are in place, backfilled, and we can start constructing the inside of the tunnel. By September of 16, we expect the tunnel to be open. That's actually about four months, three to four months ahead of schedule. So, the contractor has introduced a very ambitious schedule, and the, and we're hopefully going to watch him complete it on time, before ahead of schedule, and on budget.
That's four years from today, four years from this month?
Four years from this month, he'll have the tunnel, the tunnel be-
We'll be driving through the Midtown Tunnel?
You'll be able to, that is his plan, is you'll be able to drive through the Midtown Tunnel going westbound, the new one. The eastbound tunnel will be the old one. And the, so there's a, there's a few transitional things he has to do. And by December of 2016, he'll start the rehab of the, of the old tunnel, the old Midtown Tunnel. Which brings me to the tunnel rehab. The first thing that has to be done is the ventilation. And what they'll do is they'll go through on the westbound 264 tunnel on the rehab, and put in, take, take the rest of the roof out, there's still a little bit of the roof left in there, and then they'll put in the jet fans, and for the ventilation. Now, the new ventilation that's being built, is being built to meet present-day safety standards and air quality standards. And the new ventilation system, along with the electrical, fire safety systems, communication, and structural systems, are all designed to bring this tunnel up as much as practical to present-day standards. The, between the ventilation system and the fire safety system, the tunnel will be able to take a 100-watt fire while currently it's designed for a five-watt fire, megawatt fire. The, the lighting system will be upgraded. That's a, that alone is a $22 million upgrade for the three tunnels, the three existing tunnels. The light, the lighting in the tunnels will meet or exceed the lighting that you see in the Hampton Roads tunnels or the Monitor Merrimack tunnels. The, that is something that we could have contractually put off for about five years. We have chosen to do it, the, during the rehabilitation, because of the, the lighting is substandard right now, we're dedicated to the safety, we feel that this will help improve safety going forward. Any questions? Okay. Now, here comes the part that nobody wants to hear about, because I've done a lot of construction projects, and nobody wants to hear about the impact of traffic. We're going to start the downtown rehab. Right now, it's under design. From time to time, you'll see people in there, lanes closed, so that we can evaluate what's there. But the new, the proposed start date for the rehab is October 13th, so about a year from now. They'll go in there and they'll start rehabbing. The westbound tunnel is going to be completed in September of 15. So, you have about 23 months of rehabilitation work that's going to go, go on in there. The single lane closures, which are Sunday night through Thursday night, is 280 single lane closures. The full week enclosures, there's 25 of them, the, the work will be phased, but when you start adding it up, the, about half, half the time that this tunnel's under rehab work, the, will be impacted traffic. On the eastbound tunnel, when the ventilation is in place on the westbound tunnel, we'll start the rehabilitation of the eastbound tunnel. And there's about a nine-month overlap. So, you could see, we, you're not going to see any weekend closures where the tunnels close in both directions, but you could very well see lane closures at night during the week where there's, the tunnels down to one lane in each direction. The new tunnel, or has to be in place for the Midtown Tunnel rehabilitation to start. So, when I mentioned that it'd be a September 16 completion date, there's a few months where we have to do some, some work to get everything operating properly. And then the, the existing Midtown Tunnel rehabilitation will start in December of 16. And we should wrap this project up in April of 18. The, you know, there's, there will be some impact on traffic. We're going to try to keep it to a minimum. The, we're contractually obligated to certain dates, and the, both ERC and the contractor will entertain, you know, special events. You know, the, we're definitely not going to close the tunnel or interrupt anything during op sale or, you know, major holidays and stuff. But the last thing that would, my opinion that would interest the council here is Elizabeth River Trail. We're, have, we have to close it, and the, there's about a half-mile section that has to be closed. The, we've been working with the City Engineering Department, City Parks Department, the Trail, City Trail Department to come up with a solution. Our biggest concern is safety. We're going to run the detour down Red Gate and through the Gant neighborhood. The, we're going to put in wheelchair ramps where right now there is none. We're going to make sure that there's no lips on the sidewalk. We don't want anybody tripping. We're going to sign it, and there'll be places where we'll, the, we'll be landscaping it, and we'll make sure that we have a safe, usable trail during the detour process.
Thank you.
We're running short on time. We've got, if you guys could-
Yep.
Help us.
Well, as we do begin what will obviously be a long-term partnership with the cities of Norfolk and Portsmouth, we, ERC wants to also help create a more productive and enriched community through charitable contributions and also through community involvement. In addition to the nearly $2 million annual subsidy to HRT to increase bus and ferry service between Norfolk and Portsmouth, we're focusing our contributions, which we hope to include as charitable donations, sponsorships, employee volunteering, and other initiatives on four main areas: education, youth development, health and wellness, and the environment. We are implementing a scholarship program at the Norfolk and Portsmouth High Schools. The ERC Good Citizen Scholarship Program will begin, go into effect this year, the 2012, 2013 school year, and will award one college-bound high school senior from each high school in Norfolk and in Portsmouth with a $1,500 scholarship on an annual basis. We're looking right now, we're also seeking input for community charities from both the Norfolk and Portsmouth communities to support. So, if you all, in your packets, you have my card. Please feel free to reach out to me if you have some suggestions from your city, and I'm happy to speak with you on that. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
In closing, briefly just talk about the tolling. The tolling is scheduled to begin February the 1st, 2014. Originally, we were geared up to toll August 1st of this year. We entered into an arrangement with VDOT to delay that, that period. And just real quickly, there'll be two forms of payment. It'll be either the EZ Pass or video. And as I mentioned earlier, we are going to open a customer service center on the Portsmouth side at 700 Port Center Parkway. And that customer service center is, it's outsourced to our vendor. They will employ approximately 45 employees at that site. And again, it's to assist individuals with the video customers, as well as will be a distribution site for EZ Pass.
Thank you.
If we have time, we'll take a few questions.
I have a couple of questions. You were speaking of your minority participation, and you mentioned the SWAM as well as other minority participation. Can you break, can you break that down in terms of African-American subcontractors, contractors, women, and also disabled veterans organizations?
We certainly can do that. I don't have that information with me, but we could provide for you. We have some pretty, I mean, there's, the goals per the contract, we're required 15% DBE and 25% SWAM on all goods and services.
Okay. And then you mentioned your 140 employees, and then your potential 1,000 employees, although you haven't hired those persons yet. If I could get an idea, would that break that, might be-
Okay. I think when Dallas, I'd mentioned the 1,000, and with regards to ERC OpCo, which is the operating company, when we're in full construction and part of the team, which is Dallas manages, that includes our construction management, we'll have 135 employees plus the 45 employees that are our vendor's back office. In addition to that, there's the Skanska-Kiwet Weeks Joint Venture that will employ up to 1,000 employees during the construction period. And I think Dallas had mentioned, there's, there's a portion of them that are currently located, or just relocated over to Penner's Point. There's a number of craft workers, there's upwards to 600 that we hired in the area, and there will also be about 300 employees hired up at Sparrow's Point in Baltimore where the tubes are being fabricated.
And, and I don't know whether this applies or not, for minority contractors, whether it's SWAM or whatever, that are, that need bonding, bonding capacity, is it anything that you're doing to help them with bonding capacity to be able to participate in this project?
I can't speak to the specifics, what we're doing. I can tell you that there's been considerable amount of outreach, and VDOT has sponsored those events. And we're trying to work every which way, every way possible with all interested, interested parties. And so, the contractor, because this is a large contract, has de-bundled some of the activities to much smaller contracts.
Right, thank you.
My concern has always been with this is the lack of toll booths for people who want to pay cash. I just have a concern with this because of tourists who come here. You know, I traveled down in Florida recently and got stuck in that situation. And I just think there were no signs to indicate that this was going to be happening, that there was no cash option with this. And I'm just wondering how we are educating people before they get to this location? Is there an alternative route that they could take if they didn't want to do this? I'm probably too late in this. I brought this up a year ago, and we discussed it. I just think that it's, you know, this idea that you're going to get charged because you possibly didn't know about having the Fastpass is, to me, just unacceptable for people who are visiting our city, or even going to Virginia Beach. I think this has implications for people going to the oceanfront, you know, for tourist reasons.
Well, without the all-electronic tolling environment, we would defeat the purpose of the traffic throughput. The toll booth would just stop the traffic to a standstill, and so, we would not have flow flowing, free-flowing traffic. To the point that you have just mentioned, we'll have, in fact, we had to call it off because of the tolling delay, a significant outreach program where we're announcing all of the issues associated with the tolling. We're going to market the tolling, very similar to what you're seeing from Jordan Bridge right now. We'll have, again, we're going to have our own dedicated customer service center here in the project area that will distribute EZ passes, as well as sign up folks for the video tolling. And to that point that you're talking about, we want to work with customers. We're not going to gig an individual on that first pass, that first individual time that you have to use it, you get a video invoice. And in fact, the way the code is structured, you have to send an invoice, and before anybody's treated as a violator, they have to be given 30 days to pay the invoice. Also, the code requires is that we have the appropriate signage out that identifies where the last exit is that they would, could take without getting exposed to the toll. So, we will have that signage in place.
Marketing to like Google Maps-
Marketing to like Google Maps and all the places where people pull up maps to make sure that it's listed on there, because that was the issue that I had in Florida. Nowhere on there did it say there's toll. And I'm sure that if you have people working, that you let them know this, you know?
We have a very aggressive marketing campaign planned. We had, we were ready to implement it when we, we thought that tolling was going to happen this year. But we, that's part of it. It's also working with, we're looking at working with GPS companies as well to make sure that their maps are updated to indicate that. And there will be an aggressive education campaign as well.
We recognize those as concerns, and we're trying to address them the best way possible.
Is there anywhere in the country where, say, you have teachers that can buy in and get a reduced rate if they're traveling through this? If they bought into a pot and trying to be friendly with employees or people, our employees here, like we do with Light Rail, where we buy at a kind of a discounted rate, you still get more money, you still get money out of it, but out of respect to the people that are...
We view the discount program as the EZ Pass rate. That's the cheapest form of payment that an individual could pay for the toll. And the base rate is $1.59 as opposed to the fee is the other toll that you would have to pay with the video premium.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it, Council.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Mayor's Counsel, I want to officially introduce our Special Assistant to the City Manager for Military and Veterans Affairs. I know that he's met many of you informally over the past several months, but Captain John Andrews-